Restore communications for a maximum of thirty minutes. If we're unable to do that, then we will reconvene at a certain date, time, and place. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Mark, since you have a quorum there, Mark, you don't have to reconvene. You can just go ahead and have the meeting if I lose the teleconference.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I do have a proclamation to read. To recognize National Police Week 2021 and to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department. And whereas, some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over seventeen thousand injuries. And whereas, since the first known line of duty death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-two thousand U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed on the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. And whereas, last year, the names of three hundred and seven officers were killed on the line of duty were added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., including a hundred and thirty-five officers who were killed during twenty nineteen, plus a hundred and seventy-two officers who died in previous years, but whose stories of sacrifice had been lost to history until now. And whereas, the twenty-two thousand two hundred seventeen names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas, May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Ham, on behalf of our mayor Glenn Lewis, formally designate Mayor, or, May ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And that to further remember their contributions, I direct that all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the week. So, thank you to the men and women of the Moore Police Department. And I'll present this to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know it's such a small thing, but it's, I think it is important that, you know, communities do recognize those that choose that line of work. And it's interesting, in our nation now, not all communities do that. So, we really do say thank you. That would bring us to item number two, which would be our consent docket. So, you can go to Facebook or social media right now while I read this, if you would like. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Declare nineteen eighty-four Chevy C dash sixty dump truck vehicle number eight four six five four. As surplus, approve an American Red Cross Shelter Agreement allowing the use of the Moore Community Center as an emergency shelter during a disaster. Accept an approximate thirty-foot easement for construction of a sanitary sewer line from Apple Valley Homeowners Association located in the northwest quarter section of thirty-six Township, one-nine north, rural three west, being south of southwest thirty-fourth Street and east of Eastern. Approve an amendment to the agreement with the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. Approve renewal of a contract with Downey Construction LLC for construction management services for Old Town Park. Approve Norman Public School Bus Transportation Agreement for rental of school bus trips for Moore Parks and Recreation twenty twenty-one Oasis Day Camp Field Trips. Acknowledge receipt of construction permit number S L zero 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 one four two one zero two zero two from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for construction of sanitary sewer force main improvements to serve the southeast Basin Lift Station Force Main Project. Accept a four hundred fourteen point one-nine square foot temporary construction easement, a seven hundred forty-seven point six-zero square foot utility easement, and a six hundred and forty-seven point nine-two square foot permanent right-of-way easement from Jenny Freeman Insurance Agency Incorporated, located at five twenty-five Tower Drive, Suite A, for construction and maintenance of the southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Project. And approve and ratify claims and expenditures FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of two million four hundred ninety thousand four hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion to be approved?
Sorry? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item three is to receive the annual Pioneer Library System Report from Executive Director Lisa Wells.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and city staff for letting me visit with you a little bit this afternoon or this evening about your library. I do want to acknowledge Chris Manna, our Moore Branch Manager in Aiden Street, and Associate Director for Pioneer Library System for being here this evening. And certainly would be remiss if I didn't thank former PLS Board Treasurer, Chief Gibson, for being here as well. I know he's here as a library supporter, just as much as we are. So, thank you all for being here. We have a packet of information for you. And when you open your packet, on the right-hand side, you will see our brand-new, hot-off-the-press strategic plan and our PLS Annual Report for twenty twenty. And on the left-hand side of your packet, you will see some numbers. I want to highlight just a few numbers that celebrate strength and unity, which for us means being a part of a library system and partnering with our ten municipalities to bring library service. More than one million people visited the library this past year. Our print and digital collections were checked out over two million times by people of all ages. Customers spent six point eight million minutes throughout the summer doing Summer Learning Challenge. And sixty-four percent of the people in our service area have a library card. And eighty-nine percent of library users surveyed recommended, said that they would recommend the library to friends and family. So, as you can see, the library has been busy even in the midst of a pandemic. Digital library never closed. And in fact, we extended those services and materials over the course of the pandemic to try and do what we could to support our customers in their entertainment needs as well as their lifelong learning needs. I'm sure that many of you know that we're partners with Moore in providing library services. So, the municipality provides a building and custodial and maintenance and furniture. And Pioneer Library System comes in as the operator. And we say that we like to do anything that makes it a library, whether that's providing staff, technology, materials, or programming. That falls to our responsibility. So, we always like to share and let you know what our investment in this community is with you as a partner. And as you can see, the numbers at the top of the one-pager pretty much shows you system salaries. The library is open seventy-two hours a week. And we provide four thousand four hundred and seventy-two hours of staffing per month. So, between salaries and taxes, benefits, the technology that's directly for the Moore Library, as well as materials for the Moore Library, our investment over the last previous fiscal year was two million sixty-four dollars, two million sixty-four, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And we're happy to be a partner with you. And we're very pleased to be providing world-class library services to our community. The numbers that you see at the bottom, these are county numbers. So, it lets you know that the county of Cleveland County, the amount that of our operating expenses that were charged off to the county for being a part of the system. And the way we define those numbers is we look at our three counties and we charge the percentage of system services that's equal to the percentage of revenue that comes from that county. So, that number obviously is different between Cleveland, McLean, and Potawatomi County, but they're each being charged at the same percentage that they are bringing in ad valorem. So, that's really the boring part of my presentation, although it's important. And I like to highlight that. On the backside of that sheet, you will see a flyer really for our Spark a Change. And this is the third year that we've been doing community conversations and trying to take on a topic that's a tough topic, but a conversation that needs to be discussed. So, this year, our conversation is poverty. And Wes Moore, who wrote the book, The Other Wes Moore, will be in town later in the fall around Veterans Day. And he'll do a public presentation. And then he'll be the keynote speaker at our All Staff in Service Day that we hold on Veterans Day. But Wes tells the story of two boys who grew up in Baltimore, who both had the name Wes Moore. And one of them was a cadet. He's a veteran. And he is a bestseller author. And the other one is spending life incarcerated for killing a police officer. So, the story really is just about that one decision that literally changes your life forever. So, I encourage you, we tell you how to check the book out on the back of this. If you don't want to go to the library to get the book, I'm sure I can volunteer to Chris to bring you one. And if that still doesn't work for you, we have simultaneous use for both the ebook and the downloadable audiobook. So, if you have a drive and you want to listen to the other Wes Moore, just log on, we'll get you a library card, and you'll have automatic access to those books. I do want to share just a little bit of comments. But I want to start by highlighting the net promoter score for Moore Public Library. I think we all can acknowledge, last year certainly wasn't ordinary. However, the branch's net promoter score for April is currently eighty-eight. And for the last twelve months, it was eighty-three. Net promoter score is a loyalty metric that gauges on a scale of zero to ten how likely you would be to recommend the library to your family and friends. And just to maybe put that number in perspective a little bit, Apple has a net promoter score of sixty-nine, Starbucks seventy-seven, Pizza Hut seventy-eight. And your library has a net promoter score of eighty-three. So, they're doing a great job. The community obviously is willing to recommend them to family and friends. And they're having great experiences. And one of the things that we've been doing as a library system for about the last eighteen months is we've been collecting customer stories and highlighting them each month at our board meeting as the story of the month. And I want to share one from Moore that happened last summer. And it was a customer who shared their story that during a congratulations incentive call for Summer Learning Challenge from a staff member, this staff member spoke with a family that was thrilled to receive the call. The staff member was calling to congratulate her two sons on their participation and the points they had earned so far. And one of the things, the very first thing, that the mom said was, "I'm so glad you've called. You're the first adult I've spoken to in four days." I then spoke with the children who told me the books that they'd been reading, but then spent another ten minutes on the phone with the mother. She explained that her oldest son was special needs and he'd been struggling with not going to school. She said Wednesday was the day that they visited the school library. And he was very upset when he couldn't go to the library on Wednesday. But thanks to the online resources and our digital programming, she showed him that he could go to the library every day. They've been watching our virtual programs together. And she thanked me profusely for all the content we're providing. They're staying at home still, and of course, this was like last August. And she said the library has helped fill their time. She also talked about how easy Hoopla Kids was to use and that her youngest son, who was four, knew how to use Hoopla once she logged her in. She really felt like the library had been a huge help during this time. And for those of you who may not know what Hoopla is, it's sort of Hulu, only Hoopla at the library. So, it's an online resource for digital programs as well. As we continue at Pioneer Library System to work toward our mission of inspiring innovation, engagement, and learning in our communities, we're planning for the future. And the library of the future is very much like the library of today. And I want to show you just a short, four-minute video about the power of libraries. And I believe Thomas is going to help me here. Just like the library, the magic happens somewhere else. You don't always get to see it. Thank you for taking just the short time to listen to that. The video talked about the library being an anchor and a stimulant for economic recovery in our communities. And I know in each of your hearts, you are library supporters. And I encourage each of you perhaps to take some action toward building a new library. The citizens of Moore deserve the same library experience that all of our other neighbors have. And you're being surrounded in all of the communities by new library buildings. And as we continue to innovate together, I encourage you to use the library as your first resource. And together, we can fill employment gaps, raise the next generation of leaders, and provide opportunities for all Moore citizens. Thank you for your continued investment in the community. And I do hope that the future holds an opportunity for us to talk about a new library sometime in the near future. I know that the residents of Moore would be considerate a great investment. We love our partnership, and we'll continue to fully engage in providing a high standard of service to this community. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope I see you at the library.
Thank you very much.
I just do have one question. Do you know or have any idea when the library will resume normal operations pre, you know?
We are talking about that at our executive team meeting this Wednesday. So, we are thinking that that's in the very near future. I had a call from a Moore resident about late, the week before last, and they were looking for a place to meet and were asking about the meeting rooms. And so, I finally had an analogy in my mind. And I said to this woman, she was very delightful. But I said, "You know the bedroom that you have at your house? That when company's coming, you put everything in and then you shut the door? That's what the meeting room is. Because as we have reduced capacity, every piece of extra furniture is stored in those meeting rooms." So, we have been slowly increasing capacity and moving some of that furniture out. And so, we do look forward, just as you all do, for the library to be fully open in the very near future.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's an information item. So, we will go to item four is consider approval of library services, facilities, and maintenance agreement with the Pioneer Library System for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and through twenty twenty-two.
Vice Mayor and Council recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item five is consider awarding bid number twenty twenty-one dash zero one one for the purchase installation of cardio exercise equipment for the station to advance exercise using option one, equipment proposal number zero five four four two three, and the amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and ten cents, and utilizing option one finance, financial plan for three-year monthly payments.
Vice Mayor and Council, this bid has been going on for quite some time. It was rebid, and we decided to go with advanced exercise using option one. They're the same company that we use now. And it would be the simplest and easiest, and they've proven to be very reliable. We recommend that we go with advanced exercise using option one equipment.
And Vice Mayor and Council, we will come back to the council at a future meeting, probably the next one, for approval for the actual lease agreement. This is just to approve the vendor and the equipment. And like Parks Director, I also recommend approval.
Are we currently leasing our equipment?
We were leasing it. It was a lease-to-buy, and we were completely paid off.
And this is the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item six is approve, approval of the twenty twenty-one mowing maintenance contract with U.S. Lawns using the updated pricing list.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the annual mowing maintenance contract that we have re-approved each year. And it just has a few pricing changes in it, as included in the package.
Okay, any questions?
Did we anticipate the changes in our budget?
Yes, we did.
Very good. I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item seven is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of six portable radios and accessories in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents from Motorola Solutions Incorporated from the United States General Service Administration, contract pursuant to Part Seven, Section seven dash two oh five six.
Vice Mayor and Council, first and foremost, thank you for your kind proclamation and overwhelming support. It's been a very difficult year for a variety of reasons. These radios are a current fiscal year budgeted item as a routine part of maintenance for serviceable radios. And they will go to replace older unserviceable radios. We would recommend approval.
Make a motion to be approved. Oh, go ahead.
This is so moved.
Okay.
Okay, we've had a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions? Call the vote, please.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item eight is consider, consider renewal of a contract with Pivot in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for operation of a community intervention center to receive and hold juveniles who have been taken into custody by law enforcement agencies.
Vice Mayor and Council, this contract renewal is for next fiscal year. The contract is unchanged from the current contract. We have had Pivot in place for about the last five years. It is a location that we can take juvenile offenders, and they will hold them, and they will contact parents and provide all the services for the juveniles so that we can get officers back on the street answering emergency calls as quickly as possible. And officers don't have to wait on the juvenile. And they're in a much better place than the police department or some detention facility. This contract would just renew it for this upcoming fiscal year. We would respectfully recommend approval.
On average, how often do we use this, a month?
It depends. If we're having issues, it was a highly effective tool during our issues that we were having at the Central Station Park last year. And so, we had high volume last year. But generally speaking, a few times a month. But when you look at staffing hours and the cost of public safety dollars, it's better to have the police, it's a nominal fee to get the police officers back out on the street answering calls for service. But I would say once to twice a month. Sometimes in the summertime, it'll pick up.
I agree. I wasn't questioning that at all. I think that the training that we would need to be able to duplicate these services would be much greater than the cost of this contract. I would recommend approval.
Second.
Is, I'm, I don't need the address, but is it the facility in Moore, Oklahoma City, Norman?
It's on Northwest Fiftieth. It's the old Berry House, Vice Mayor, if you remember that from back in the day. It's now a nonprofit that provides these services through five oh one C three donations and then contracting with U.S. Palates.
Do you remember the JIC, the Juvenile Intervention, I guess it closed, or?
Yes, sir, it closed about five years ago. And this group that is affiliated with Pivot is similar to and was affiliated with JIC during its operation.
Okay, great. Well, we've had a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. We have, item nine, do I need to read this still? Okay, item nine is consider approval for ordinance number nine seven two twenty-one, amendment, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Five, Article J by removing current drainage regulations for development within the city of Moore and adopting the Storm Water Management Criteria Update Manual as the Drainage Regulations for the City of Moore. Planning Commission recommend approval eight to one, and.
Motion to table.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion to table and a second. Call the vote.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item's tabled. Bring us to item ten. It's consider the primary plat of the hills at Timber Creek, located in the northwest quarter section thirty-three Township ten, rural two west, being south of southeast thirty-fourth Street and east of Sooner Road. Application is by Mongold Properties LLC, Kirby Mongold. Planning Commission recommend approval nine to zero.
Mayor and Council, this property is located south of southeast thirty-fourth Street and east of Sooner Road. The property is currently zoned R one, single-family residential, with the northwest corner of the property, which is the hard corner, being zoned C three. The applicant is proposing to develop this into a single-family residential neighborhood. It's approximately seventy-eight point four-six acres in size, has seven formalized common areas, and eighty-seven living units. That's an overall density of one point three-four living units per acre. Public water is available to serve this site, and public sewer is not currently available. Stormwater detention for this development is required. There is no FEMA. There is no FEMA floodway or floodplain located on the property, and the development does include a detention pond located on the west side of the property. Access for the proposed development is provided by three access points, two of which will be located along Southeast 34th Street, and a third access point being located along Sooner Road. The east access road along 34th Street will also serve as an access point to the future school site that is located directly to the south of this property. The envisioned Moore 2040 plan calls for this location to be open space residential, with the north, northwest corner being neighborhood commercial. Land uses in the open space residential include existing neighborhoods with large lots or new neighborhoods with significant open space. Land uses in the neighborhood commercial land use district include commercial developments that are convenient to residential areas and employment centers. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan, and due to the overall densities of 1.34 lots per acre and the walkable attributes of the proposed development, with the internal street connection to the school site to the south, staff believes this site does conform with the requirements of the open space residential land use designation and the overall goals and recommendations of the plan. And staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So where is the tie-in to the south?
There is a street that's located on the extreme east side of the development that comes south from Southeast 34th Street.
Ah, okay.
And it looks like it deadens right now, but it'll be extended down.
Thank you.
So I have some questions on the area in our packet that says the pedestrian-oriented design, that the plan has a large emphasis on sidewalks. Does that mean it will have sidewalks throughout the neighborhood or the proposed?
Yes, this is zoned R1, so they will be required to have sidewalks throughout the neighborhood and also along the arterial roadways.
All right, are there any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. To call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item 11 is consider approving 225,000 in CARES reimbursement money for additional design work on South 34th between Broadway and I-35.
Vice Mayor and Council, a little over a year ago, you approved a contract with Guernsey Engineering and Architects to provide design services for designing Southwest 34th Street east of the Little River Project and I-35 Bridge, or the bridge over I-35. This is an extension of that, from that location of Little River to Broadway Avenue, and also it will go a little bit north on Broadway just to get past the school to provide some better access to the school.
You gonna fix any of those drainage problems over there?
Yeah, we hope so. Yes, we will. So far, we did, when you approved that contract, we funded the study and report and 30% preliminary design. What this funding would do, would, would fund the remainder of the design, 60% final design, and get us ready to go out to bid and advertise for construction. It is estimated that we need approximately 200, or based on the contract, we need about $225,000 to be able to move forward and authorize them to proceed with that. We would recommend that you approve the funding of the CARES money for that.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
So Randy, we qualify for, to utilize this, that money for this?
This is a great person.
Yes.
Money that we've already spent.
Okay.
We're getting that back in our budget.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We've had a motion and a second. To call the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item 12 is consider approving 131,000 in CARES reimbursement money for the city of Moore's share of Santa Fe Avenue Reconstruction Project between Southwest 34th Street and Indian Hills, Hills Road.
This is a similar item in that we are asking to utilize CARES reimbursement funding to be able to reconstruct Santa Fe from Southwest 34th Street to Indian Hills. This particular project is a joint project with Oklahoma City, Norman, and the county, and of course, the city of Moore. The city is responsible for 25% of the estimated construction cost, which is approximately $131,000. It is anticipated that construction will begin as early as the end of May timeframe and hopefully be done or completed by the end of the summer.
I got a lot of noise on this one coming my way.
Well, when, when we had the winter storm, boy, it really deteriorated that section of the roadway really bad, so.
So if we can expedite it any at all, that would be wonderful. Most approve, second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Any other questions? To call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item 13 is consider approval of the purchase of 14 heat and air units in the amount of $22,966 for City Hall.
Vice Mayor and Council, this particular item, when City Hall was constructed many years ago, the heating and cooling system was made up of 64 heat pumps to heat and cool the various areas within the facility. Over the past 12 to 15 years, we've replaced 21 of those heat pumps. And what we're asking to do with this year is, is we put together a plan to go ahead and replace over the next three and a half years to replace the remaining 40 of those heat pumps. The funding, we did receive three quotes ranging from a low of $22,827.60 to a high of $32,263.99. We would recommend that you award to the lowest responsive quote that we received from Air Products Supply, which is located in Norman, for that $22,827.60.
Will they do all the install work and everything also?
No, the install work will be done by city crews.
Okay.
This is just for the materials, or for the pumps and the.
We, these are in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
And it's, it's 22,966 or 866?
Just a correction from what was on the agenda. It's $22,827.60 from the quote.
Okay, all right. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. We will now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 14 is the consent docket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April 19th, 2021. B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $562,610.16.
Motion to approve, second.
We had a motion and a second. To call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. We'll now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item 15 is consent docket. A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April 19th, 2021. And B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $180,011.36.
Motion to approve, second.
We have had a motion and a second. To call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. And we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. All members are still present. Item 16, new business. Item A, Citizens Forum, items not on the agenda. Believe anybody signed up? Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Item B is items from the city council trustees.
I have one thing that I would like to bring up. I had spoken to you guys, a couple of you, about this before on this CARES Act. And apparently, under the Biden administration, we're going to be receiving another 6.5 to 8.5 million, depending on who you hear it from. And what I would like to do is I would like to give back to the citizens of Moore a $100 check for every water bill that we have or every water account to make up for some of the things that have gone on with COVID, some of the things that have gone on with the ice storm that we had that put everybody in, didn't put everybody in a bind, but it put a lot of people in a bind. And we have the monies to do that, thanks to the city manager and the assistant city manager for the great, the job that they have done over the year. And I think the citizens, it would be the first time that a government entity has ever given back any money to the citizens. And I think it would be a good gesture on our part to do so. How do you feel about it?
Yeah, what have you, bros, Randy, is that a possibility?
$100, I believe there's approximately 25,000 residential water accounts, so $100.
15,000 accounts, I believe, 15,786 is what we had listed last time.
So we're, we're talking.
180, or under 170,000, give or take.
Well, the.
Well, even if it was 250,000, it'd still be a bargain on our part.
Sure. We're waiting for the deposit for the next round of funding from the federal government and the criteria that goes along with that. And certainly, if there's no prohibition against that, I think the mayor has an excellent idea and would support it.
Well, thanks. We also have, apparently, according to the books, we're over $3 million in extra sales tax monies as well. So we should have the money to do this. I mean, there's always a, there's always something you can spend money on as a city. We're always behind $10 million on every project, so I know how money is tight. But I just think that, you know, how many times have we set up there in the last couple of years? And we've had to raise water rates or something, and we all felt bad about it, but it's something we had to do. And it's like, now we have the opportunity to pay it back, let's pay it back.
Well, good. I mean, I like that, I would.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. It's a Randy, you start to say something?
I, I was gonna say, I started to do it as a credit, but the last time we did the credit with the water bills was nuts. I think it would just be easier to just issue a $100 check to each account, then they can do what they need with it.
Once we get guidelines.
Yeah.
Regulations and rules.
Make sure they're not behind.
Great idea. I think it'd be a great idea to look into, sure. Let's wait till we get everything in, but mayor, I think it's a great idea.
Well, thanks. Thank you, guys, for all the stuff you do. Appreciate you.
I would just have a, just a couple of quick things. Just kind of reminded today about May 3rd, and I guess it's been 22 years when we had our first large F5 tornado come through Moore and just wreak so much, so much destruction. And I was just kind of thinking about that today. And at the time, I was working for the sheriff's office, and I remember sitting at the intersection of 134th and Western. And there used to be a store there, I think it was McCoy's, it was like a convenience store. And I was sitting there in my patrol car, just watching this big monster come roaring through the South Oklahoma City and Moore and other communities as well. And just remember feeling hopeless because there's nothing, nothing you can do other than just get out of the way. But I, I really remember through all of our natural disasters that have happened here, how this community, as well as others, have always come together and done everything that we've needed to do to, to get us back to, to being whole. And I always appreciate that. So just wanted to reflect and to remember that as well.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate that. I was sitting in that same exact chair you're sitting in, as it went overhead, and Randy was sitting right there in front of me, too. And we remember it quite well, don't we, Randy?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
I was 16.
Got a freddy hole to go get in now, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the best things the council has ever done is put in storm shelters in City Hall. That and the, you know, the police station over there, that's fantastic as well. But you guys have done a great job with that.
I agree with that. And then also, I would, I don't, I think this was kind of a, a big deal, and I think, I don't know if you were gonna say anything or not. I should have asked you before, but I didn't, so we'll just do it now. That's always fun. But I was reading, I saw it on social media that our police chief, oh, it's all right, was, has the honor of serving as a commissioner on, for the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and Dangerous Drugs, and just is, and I believe it's just kind of an oversight committee to help ensure that they're having good, effective law enforcement throughout the state. So again, I think that is, is something worth recognizing, and we appreciate all that you really have done in representing Moore so well. And I'm glad that the state's able to take advantage of your training and experience as well. So, thank you. And that's all I have. Anybody else?
I just have a comment about our heavy rain that we received. I think our city staff, because I know that there were areas where it started flooding pretty seriously. So our city staff, Silver Star, and our other partners, that went out and handled that. I know it was well after hours when the rain was just pouring down on some of those projects that are in works. So thank you, guys, for handling that so quickly.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, well, then the next item would be adjournment.
So moved, second.
We've had a motion and a second. To call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we are adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody. It's good to see you, Glenn.
Thanks, you too.